School Board Member and Superintendent Comments. We'll start down there with Ms. Morton.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming out. What an exciting meeting. I can't, this is a special meeting. This is the last meeting of Allegheny County School Board. And I can't think of a better way to capstone this meeting than honoring our spring athletes. What you all accomplished this year between baseball and girls soccer was nothing less than amazing. You showed true team spirit. You represented our school system well. You made us all proud. And you played with your hearts. And your hours of long work and dedication showed off. So, thank you to all. And I don't know what's cooler, honoring you or recognizing all your faces through your parents. That a lot of us went to school with. So, that's pretty cool too. So, thank you all for coming out tonight, letting us recognize you. It was also amazing to have Mr. Stein spring here tonight and present you all. We're very blessed to have him. This is his first meeting with us. So, thank you for joining our team. It was very exciting tonight. So, it means a lot that you come out and your parents come out. We like to see your faces and we like to recognize and congratulate you. And we know the hard work and dedication that you put in. So, with that said, the only other, and the coaches, I don't want to forget the coaches. And we know that you all give countless hours and time of your free time. And you take care of these kids and love them like they're your own. So, thank you for being positive mentors in all you do for them. With that said, this meeting is very bittersweet for me. This current board we have is probably my most favorite board that I've been a part of since I've been on the school board. I enjoy working with every single member here. We challenge each other, but in a very respectful and professional way. We come together to improve our school system. And I'm going to be really sad that I can't move forward with each of you. But I'm excited for along the way to consolidation and what the future holds. But you all, each of you, whether you're going with us on the new board or not, have made a lasting impact on me. And I will always consider you not only peers, but my friends. So, thank you.
Mr. Shaw.
My last meeting on the school board. And we need to congratulate all the spring athletes here. It's great that Allegheny County has all these wonderful athletes. And they're doing such great things in girls soccer and baseball. You just wouldn't think that in Allegheny County we'd be doing such great things in athletics. And it's great moving forward into the new school system. That we're taking all this talent into the new school system. Congratulations to all the players, all the coaches, all the staff that made, all the managers that made everything possible for your offseason. Like I said, this is my last meeting. It's been a tough few years navigating through COVID, sporting events, masking, as well as merging two school systems. It's been an amazing trip. I built relationships and friendships that will last a lifetime. And I thank everyone along the way who had a hand in helping me get settled in when I was initially appointed to this board. Also, I'd like to thank every member of this current board for the great, wonderful working environment that we had through every decision that we had made. Whether we agreed or disagreed, we did it all with class. I would encourage everyone to get behind this new board, support them, come to meetings, speak your mind, let them know your opinions. But do it with class and respect. To all the recent graduates and future graduates of our school systems, don't live or plan your life based on someone else's definition of success. Some will attend college and become doctors, nurses, lawyers, or scientists. Some will attend trade school and become welders, auto mechanics, or carpenters, or even join the armed forces. The point is, pick your career that you enjoy, stick with it, and don't worry if others think it's not a good job or not. If you love what you do, you'll never work a day in your life. I've just, I've been blessed in my life. I've been doing the job that I've always wanted to do since I was eight years old. And I'm not getting rich, but I love it. And that's what it's all about. If you pick a career and you love it, don't care about what other people think about it. Just do what you love.
Mr. Littleton.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's good to see so many people. All the athletes here in the room, congratulations. It was great seeing y'all play and all of your hard work and dedication. And just remember that same hard work and dedication you put into these sport events to make it to where you are today. Take those same steps with everything, and you will truly succeed. So, work hard at everything you do, you will do well, I have no doubt in my mind. Y'all are all champions, and I thank you all very much. Y'all put Allegheny Public Schools in the record books with some of this. So, we do appreciate you very much. It's sad to see that Allegheny County School System will be closing. But at the same time too, it's great to see this new chapter in our lives with Covington City Schools. And we look forward to that. I also want to thank every person here on the board along with me of all their hard work and dedication. And I do see that we all can all be on the board together. But, because I'd love to keep this board because everyone works so great together. And everyone's always listens to what everyone else has to say. And that's a great thing. Also, I want to thank all of our staff, all of our administration, all of our bus drivers, janitors, everybody. It takes everyone to make things work. We've been hit with hard challenges the past two years. But we're succeeding, and I know we'll succeed in the future. Thank you.
Ms. Jefferson.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight. Congratulations to all the athletes. Great job. We all stood here so close to feeling we have people. This is, this is not the last meeting, so.
Mr. Helmataller.
Yeah, thanks everybody for coming. My last meeting too. I've enjoyed my time here. Maybe one of the shortest school board runs, but it was enough. I enjoyed it. I will still help with some stuff, just maybe not in this capacity. To the athletes, Gabe Miller, probably one of the more decorated individual athletes to come through Allegheny a long time. Congratulations to him. Baron Leach, same thing. Saw everything he's done. I've known him for a long time. Baseball team, Coach Bradley, congratulations. I coached Seth in high school. So, I knew that when he became a coach, he'd be very successful. I know a lot of these guys on the baseball team. I know how hard they work. I know two of them that work very hard because I enjoy sitting down at my parents' house, enjoying a cigar on the back porch. And I get to hear the constant tink of a metal bat next door with the vise. But I bet you they hit 500 baseballs a day. So, I'm glad to see that hard work pay off. Girls soccer team, probably just listening to those accolades, one of the most decorated teams that I can remember to come through this, through the school system. Piggybacking on what Ms. Jefferson said, I remember us having a meeting and you guys came in here to have your field for that season. And your goal was to host a region game. And I don't know if y'all remember this or not, but I said, why not try to up it and host a state game? And sure enough, you did it. So, that's, that is a lot. But I think the one thing that I will say about your team is I'm blown away about the impact you guys have had on your community with the girls soccer. I've got friends who have daughters that play youth soccer. And they think you guys are the, I don't know soccer teams, but you guys are like the Los Angeles Lakers. So, you guys have had an impact on this season. But I think 10, 15 years from now, you'll be able to look back and say, wow, look at the impact we've had on girls soccer in Allegheny County. That is amazing. That is something that will be better than any state ring, state championship, the impact that you've had on your community. Congratulations on that. I hope you guys are proud of that. As far as meeting, I've enjoyed serving on the board with everybody as well. I look forward to seeing the new school board. Hopefully, we can get some, you guys can get some of the stuff that we've kind of had to put on the back burner done early on in your run there. We're really, we're in a really good spot with athletics. I think if there's one thing that I can say and encourage to this board, and I'm going to be back, I promise you that. Because I'm going to get back involved with the Mountaineer or whatever this athletic club's going to be. Let's invest in our student athletes. We have got to as a community, and as a school board, and as a county and a city seats. And I, you know, I really hope we start investing in our athletes because they're working their butts off. And we've got to really step up and meet their efforts with our resources and our efforts. As a community leader, I promise you I'll do that as well. But we need to really start getting our teams on an even playing field. It's amazing what our coaches do with the resources and the facilities they have. So, you know, I really want to see this consolidated school system really, really step up. And I challenge the school system, I challenge Allegheny County and the City of Covington to really take stock in what we have and what we're competing with and what others have and see where we are. Because you may be surprised with how far behind an eight ball we are. So, hopefully, we will see that. That was one of the main reasons I chose to do this. So, I made a promise to a lot of people that I would make sure that we get there. And I think we're heading in the right direction. You know, the weight room was a huge success. And I think Coach Bob can attest to that and Coach Lanford. You know, it was, it was not a place for female athletes to go lift weights prior to this change we did. And to see softball, soccer, female sports have success. And that was really a minor financial commitment. I mean, that's just a tiny drop in the bucket. And to see that much success that early, just imagine what we can do if we, if we as a community step up to the plate and really improve our facilities and our resources for student athletes. I think that's really where I think my goal is going to be moving forward and the way I can help in the community. I love doing that. So, hopefully, I can work with Mr. Stein spring in the future and help him be a resource to him. And I look forward to that. And I look forward to a consolidated school system. And the last thing I would leave is for parents and everybody, consolidation is here. So, it's time to do what we need to do as a community and support it 100%. Because the better we support it, the better it will be. Our kids are bought in. The kids are going to be, are going to thrive in. So, I think as parents and a community, if we thrive in it, the kids will feed off that energy. And I think it's endless with what we can do. So, I look forward to watching you guys, what you do on the new board. Thank you.
Mr. Fransen.
Thank y'all for coming out. I was sitting here looking at my notes and I said, I think these don't, these picturize all the things I wanted to say all the way down to the list. But when you're near the end, it's hard, it's hard to add anything. I just want to say, what a heck of a job you athletes and coaches did. I mean, I saw young girls, there were some of the parents and the young girls who grew not on y'all's team. But what a role model y'all made for the, for other kids. For the young girls who are playing soccer now, just not at your level. Just what a job. What an absolutely awesome job. It was good to see Mr. Stein spring. You know, over the last, I guess, year or so, I think we've made some home runs. We hired Mr. Stein spring, Ms. Halterman, Eric, and Dr. Conway. I mean, these are top-notch administrators, top-notch. And I think we just, we were blessed to get them. Also, I too have mixed feelings about losing our Allegheny County School Board. But I was, I was one of the ones on the merger committee. And we want to thank both school boards, both government bodies, Covington, Allegheny, for supporting, for looking past all the issues they've had all these years while they didn't consolidate or merge, okay? And they looked past, you know, personal issues. You know, I don't want to lose the Cougar name. I don't want to lose the Mountaineer name or the colors and stuff. They looked past that and looked to see how it would help us grow our system. How it would help our kids to be able to have choices, more choices. It was well, it was well done. And I always tell them, we made history. You know how long they've been trying to merge these systems? And finally, people sat down that didn't have a special agenda. All they wanted to do was to, let's make our school better for our kids. Let's get a better offering for them. Let's put our athletics together and get even better. Can you imagine you guys pick up a couple more ball players, soccer players, maybe get even better, okay? Win two state championships. And, you know, it's, it makes me a little anxious because of the unknown. Anytime you go into something new, you're going to feel anxious, but also have high expectations. That what we have done was the right thing to do. Did the best thing we could for our kids. And sometimes people forget about that. This is, this is not about administration. This is not about us on the board. This is about you guys. And I know you probably get mad at the kind of kids, because most of you grown up like. But it's, you'll see. It's going to work out fine, okay? And again, it talked about today about working hard, work ethic. I think you did, any about work ethics? You want to learn about work ethics, follow some of these staff members and these teachers and the coaches and, you know, administrators. Not only have they run the schools, right? But during that same time for, you know, no extra money, they are getting the consolidated systems together. You just, you'd have to follow, right? You have to follow them to see how much work it is. And that's the kind of dedication. When you all find what you want to do in life, if you dedicate yourself like that, not mean so much about the money, but what you're doing, you will succeed. And you're right, you got to love what you do. You got to love it. If you have to, if you get up in the morning and you think, oh, good heavens, I got to go to work today. You need to find something else to do, right? That's not the way to feel. You need to, you want to get up and go do something, be successful. And I thank you all. I thank you very much. And I just, from the bottom of my heart, you guys have made us so proud of how you represented Allegheny County Public Schools. Thank you very much.
Mr. Counts.
All right. I'm used to going first, so this is a nice change, finally. Getting to watch what everyone else.
You're a graduate now.
Yeah. Things change after that, I guess. First, I would like to congratulate the spring athletes. For fall, winter, and spring, we all had big crowds of people being honored, and that is a great thing to see. And I'd like to congratulate the class of 2022 for graduating. I wasn't there to see it in person, but I got to see it through Allegheny Journal, so shout out to them. Obviously, this is my last school board meeting. And I'd like to thank both Ms. Stanton and Mr. Ross for dealing with my constant questions before I got on the board. I'm sure I bothered you more than anyone could possibly imagine. But I just wanted to make sure that when I entered the board, that I would be able to feel Abby's shoes as much as possible. And I don't know if I quite got to that level, but she was, that was a top-tier representative. So, I'd like to thank the superintendent and the board members for all they've taught me. This was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for me, and the lessons I have learned will benefit me throughout my life. Many challenges were faced by the board this year. But I'm happy with how everything turned out and how resilient both the student body, the board, and the community was in solving those issues. I feel that the students of our school greatly benefited by most of the decisions from the board this year. And it was good to see, you know, in those background discussions before board meetings, all the stuff being sorted out and making sure that the students' best needs were put first. That was, that was a good thing to see. I wish the best of luck to the new board and the new school in the years to come. And if I was to give any kind of advice, have more than one student representative. It's good to have a representative. That way, the students' needs and wants can be reflected. But you can never have too much of that. It's always a good thing to have. So, I was extremely thankful for this opportunity, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't want to get emotional talking about this stuff. But Gabe Miller, the most decorated athlete in Allegheny County Public Schools history. If you all knew Gabe like four or five years ago, like, that kid is proof that you can do anything you want to if you work hard enough. I mean, that dude changed himself. I mean, Mr. Barley, I know was a big part of that. Is Mr. Barley still in here? Mr. Barley back there hiding. I usually wear this tie for when we have running things. I've got this tie with runners on it. But since it was like 90 degrees today, I kind of opted out. And I didn't want the girls or the boys baseball team to get mad at me for being one-sided. So, I decided I'd skip the tie today. But always proud of Mr. Barley and his teams. Baron Leach, Mr. Davis, wow, to be able to, he's another great example. 15 months, 16 months of playing soccer, and he's the district champion, the region champion, you know, it's awesome. Our baseball team, I know they had a little, tough little spell for a little while. But they really, they really stepped up when it really mattered. You know, we've got a young baseball team. A lot of these guys will be able to play in a consolidated school system when we merge with Covington. Jason's talking about those Vibe Boys hitting the ball. I think they've been hitting that weight room a little bit too. If I ever need a body art, I'm looking to the Vibe. But yeah, we are super proud of you guys and everything you all have done. You know, you guys are, you guys are doing great. You've got some great seniors that you've lost from that team and some real leaders there. We've got a lot of youth. We're really looking forward to things to come for Allegheny baseball. Y'all've got a great career ahead of you. These soccer girls, they, they hold kind of a special place in my heart because they came up here and told us that they wanted to win. And they did it. They, Kinley might have been all those things, but she was also the most beat-up girl on soccer field. I mean, she's not very big in size, but she's really big in heart, and all these girls are, you know. I saw Carly rolled her ankle the last minute of practice before the last, you know, Bob, you could have given her a day off. But I mean, I saw Brianna, she was fighting. She did not want to come out. I could see Emma's blood on her face from 75 yards away. I was standing there with her dad, John Scott's been a longtime friend of mine, and he wasn't worried. And I wasn't either. I knew, I knew who their mom was. And, you know, it's just, she was, she was going, get away from me, get away. And the girls were coming, and they were like, no, no, come, come. She's like, no, get away. You know, it meant a lot to me because it was, her teammates worried about the belt. And she was more worried about her teammates and winning that game. Man, she did great. And Ashton stepped right in there and filled in while she was gone and had some nice blocks. Here comes Emma 15 stitches later. But I mean, they, they played with so much, so much heart. There's such a small team. And watching those girls out there for 80 minutes, just, it's incredible. John Scott, Emma and Abby's dad and I were standing there at the game at Cave Spring. And this woman said, how long's Allegheny been around? We didn't know y'all had soccer team. We never heard about Allegheny until the past couple of years, and that's all we hear about. I don't even think she'd ever heard of Allegheny High School. But I can kind of gauge things in the community, whether I hear about them at Caskey Market in the mornings or not. I had this old country guy, I don't think he knew that we even had a baseball team anymore. He said, hey, girls soccer, they're really doing something out there, aren't they? Did you know we had girls soccer? You know, it's just amazing how like people were keeping up with the baseball team and the soccer team and Baron. And like all these things are happening. I remember being at Mountaineer Field, the girls had just won their game. And everybody's huddled around watching somebody's cell phone and, you know, watching the boys. And then they end up kicking us out of there. And y'all went to, y'all were in extra innings. And do as I say, not as I do. I was driving up the road watching the game. I just couldn't, couldn't pull myself away from it. But it was, you know, like to go 11 innings and, and I mean, you guys just killing it. Everybody has. And our whole community is, is excited about what's happened in the past few months. And Brian Stein spring might try to take all the credit for all the work he's all done over the past, you know, 18 years. But we're certainly glad to have him, and he came in at the exact right time. But it's just exciting to see all these things that are happening. I'd like to point out that Levi said that he wasn't at his graduation, which he wasn't. But Levi is, he's kind of what, what all of us are, and he's a team player. He was at the state track championship to root on his teammate, skipped his high school graduation. That's awesome. But this board has been fantastic. We've done, made some really tough decisions, but we made a lot of good ones too. And we haven't always agreed, but we've always been respectful and worked together. And it's, it's just been great to see how, how far we can come and all the great things we can do. And we really work together and put our kids first. So, I really appreciate everybody that's been on this board. I appreciate you all entrusting me to be the chairman. I'm going to miss Patrice and Richard, Jason. I'm going to miss all these seniors and the baseball team and girls soccer. But, you know, starting next week, we're going to be a new school division. And we hope that you all will support us as hard as our community has supported these teams over the past couple of months. Jason said we need to put our kids on an even playing field. We might even have to put them on a regulation field too. I appreciate you all being here and thank you all for taking time out of your summer to be a part of this and come out here. So, we can honor you. Thank you all. Superintendent Hall.
It is very hard to follow all of you all tonight. Well, it has been quite a spring semester. Lots of successes, such great students, both in our midst in this room. And then also students in other levels in our school division who've done amazing things this, this season. We're obviously very proud of our graduating seniors. There are lots of successes on behalf of our high school students in particular, including, of course, these athletes who are here with us this evening. We're very, very proud of so many accomplishments from track baseball, girls soccer, tennis in particular, but not, certainly not limited to those teams. And there are more successes rolling in still, like those state honors you heard about in girls soccer. They, they came in today. So, we're very excited by all these students have achieved and that they continue to achieve. And all the support that they've had from their coaches, from other staff, from their families, from our community. At graduation, a couple of the student speakers mentioned also just what a big deal it is to have finished this school year. I think in education, we often come to the end of a school year and go, wow, what a year. This has been, wow, what a year. This has been a time that we really appreciate the efforts of our staff, our students, their families, our community, everyone who's come together to support our kids and our schools. Because it has not been easy to do all of the different things that have occurred this year. And we just really appreciate everybody cheering everyone on and helping to make it, helping to make it all work. We just really appreciate that. And it's really humbling to say that with so many students, both in front of and behind me. That's a, that's a pretty cool experience here tonight. Would certainly like to give a special shout out to Levi this evening for helping us out as our student representative this year. You know, this is the first time I've worked with a student representative from time being seated to time exiting. And I've just really enjoyed and appreciated your enthusiasm and your willingness to engage in lots of conversations that are typically reserved for individuals who are older than you. And we really appreciate your commitment and dedication very, very much. This, this evening wouldn't be complete if I did. This, this evening wouldn't be complete if I didn't also really recognize the significance of the evening. This is, this is truly a really, a really significant moment in our local regional history. It's certainly significant for the people in this room, but also for a lot of other individuals in our community. And those of you who know me well know I don't, don't often mix my work in personal spheres, but I'm about to do it for a second. This evening, as I was thinking about what I wanted to say, I wanted to talk a little bit about my dad. And my dad's been gone from this community. He has, he has passed on. He passed away in 2007, so he's been gone for a while. But he was a lifelong resident of our region and just a really, just a really good guy. One of the things about my dad was that he was very, very patriotic. Part of that, he served in the Navy, that's actually the only time he didn't reside, you know, in our, in our broader geographic region. And he very much believed in American freedoms and American rights. And, and in fact, if you would ask him who he voted for, he would not tell you. He, he would remind you that, that he doesn't have to. We have, we have a secret, we have a secret ballot in our country. Now he'd engage with you and talk to you about whatever it was you wanted to know about what he thought, but he wouldn't tell you exactly where he stood on an issue, except honestly this one. He was a huge fan of combining our community's resources on behalf of our kids in the area. And that is what our community has opted to do through this entire process. It, it has been a very long journey, but a very, very good one and we hope that it will bring more and more successes like the successes we see in the room this evening. It's an incredible honor to be any part of that, but this is work that our community has done. So it is a tremendous personal honor for me to sit here and say that and to be any part of that process from Allegheny County Public Schools. You know, I was reflecting on dad, it's Father's Day, right? It's Father's Day season and, you know, part of that, part of that Navy life, you know, shaped his life and I, I can't help but think about the way you personify ship. You know, we're, we're bringing a ship into port. This is, this is a little bit challenging. It's very bittersweet, but it is the right thing to do. And there's another ship getting ready to sail out and that's something all of our community has been working on. So some of us have been fortunate to be part of the leadership in that process, but everyone in our community has been involved in that process and we just very humbly appreciate that. To the board directly, on behalf of the staff of the school system, we really want to say thank you for your faith in us. That's faith in the central office team, that's faith in the entire staff team, our, our teachers, our bus drivers, our custodians, our principals, everyone who helps make the schools go, and most importantly, your faith in our students and in our families. There are so many people who have made Allegheny County's public schools great and we should be very proud of that and, and they're not all here right now. We all, we all know that as well, but the people in this room have been able to build on their successes and that's, that's pretty incredible. We just really sincerely appreciate the service of our board and we want to recognize those contributions this evening. Recently we had graduation, we had CMS's promotion ceremony with our kiddos who are becoming high school students and I used hope as a theme for some speeches that I was asked to give at those occasions. And, you know, a student pointed out to me what she felt hope really was and she said that it was stepping out into the unknown a bit and, and moving forward when you're not really certain exactly what's going to happen next, but moving forward anyway because you believe it must be something good. And I can't help but think about that this evening. Our kids understand this very well, particularly with their experience with the pandemic, but the adults gathered in this room, we understand that tonight too. So to, to our board, we really want to thank you tonight for being such an amazing group of advocates for our kids and we, we do have a certificate for you this evening that we'd love to bring forward to you if it pleases the board. Thank you.